This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, well, this evening's work session is for Paul Lewis to go over the 2021 city budget. This is preliminary budget, so this work session will be dedicated just to that topic. So with that, Paul, I'm just going to turn it over to you and appreciate all your hard work and putting this together for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna share my screen. It gave me a little bit different menu. Can you see it? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry about that. As the mayor was saying, sort of love-hate relationship with the remote meetings. As the mayor mentioned, the primary topic for today is to go over the mayor's 2021 preliminary budget. A lot of this will be review. We're adding items from the October 5th budget that was presented to you in September and provided to you October 5th. The adjustments include some of the mayor's initiatives, changes that the mayor has put in, plus a random set of updates that we've made since that time. And so I've got about 25 slides. I think I can get through them fairly quickly and feel free to ask questions as we go along. So first up, just want to check in on the process. So this is the same slide that we've seen before. As I mentioned, we had a workshop on September 23rd. We presented the baseline budget to City Council on October 5th. That was part of that September 23rd presentation. We've had a number of Budget Advisory Committee meetings since that workshop. We had one on October 7th and then another one on October 21st, which is really a preview of the information that you're going to see tonight. And then, so the presentation tonight is to review the mayor's preliminary budget. The next steps in the process, really, there's two major ones. We'll have a workshop on the public hearing, to go over the public hearing on the revenues and the property tax levy. That'll be on November 18th. The public hearing will also be on that night and on your agenda that night will be the ordinance for the property tax levy as well. We'll have preliminary notices published for the preliminary budget in early November. That budget will be available to the public subsequent to those notices. And we're currently targeting December 2nd for the adoption of your 2021 budget. So that's, and there'll be a public hearing on that night as well before you consider the ordinance adopting that budget. So that's the quick process check-in. Before we get to the preliminary budget, I had a couple of slides to just give you a quick economic update. And this one is actually out of date as of this afternoon, but I can fill you in. But the September sales tax came in at $65,868, another high watermark month for the year. This is actually the second highest month ever in the city. There was a $71,000 month. Actually, let me correct myself. It's now the third highest because we just got October's information in. And October was, let me get the correct number here, $67,331. So sales tax continues to come in very strong at the local level. And again, I think this is attributed to the middle school construction as well as the residential construction and the subdivision development that's going on. And probably some attributed to the stay-at-home sales, sales that may have taken place at some of the retail outlets that are now being coded to La Center when they're being delivered to people's homes. So another positive month. We had expected just under $60,000 in October and it came in at $67,000. And we'll be watching this monthly for the rest of the year. Another quick update on the building permits. And you can see this has October information through the 21st. The blue bars are the cumulative totals for 2021. So you can see a 15 permit increase between the end of September and last week for the residential side. And, you know, effectively, this is 121, so we're already exceeded the last two years combined in terms of residential building permits for the city of La Center. So continues, the permit activity continues. Those subdivisions continue to be being built out. A couple of slides on local employment. This is the jobs in Clark County. So these are the jobs that are physically located in Clark County. Had a little bit of a dip in September as a result of a decline in K-12 jobs. Typically, in the fall, those jobs go up. This is unseasonally, this isn't seasonally adjusted. So these are the raw numbers, but typically there's an increase in K-12 jobs in the fall. My guess is, again, due to the pandemic, the stay-at-home learning, a number of school districts have both not done the hiring, but have also included some layoffs this fall. If you take out that 1,200 jobs, there's actually a 400 job increase. So while there, I think that qualifies as a cooling off, it's not necessarily a pullback from before with the exception of the K-12 jobs. So still 155,900 jobs. You can see, if you wanted to go back and see where that would be on an annual basis, you have to go all the way back to 2016 before you get to a number that's below that, below that level. So still a pretty large decline over the peak in 2019. So that's, you know, 14,300 jobs, a little bit less than 10%. So still significant reduction in overall employment. This is a story of employed labor force. So these are the number of people who reside in Clark County that are employed. And this is covered employment. So this is employees that are covered by unemployment insurance, doesn't include self-employed people. But you can see this has a similar story, somewhat of a mixed message here. The unemployment rate actually went down from 9.4% to 8.1%. But it's primarily a function of a reduction in the labor force because we had a reduction of a little over 4,300 jobs, employment. People employed dropped by 4 to 300, but the labor force reduced by about 8,000. So again, it could be unemployment insurance lapsing or other reasons why people have pulled out of the labor force. But again, unemployment rate at 8.1% and employment at 216,000 back in the 2018-17 level currently. So that's the economic update. Any questions before I transition to the slides on the preliminary budget? Again, I think both locally and some other slides a little bit later on, potential coming on the countywide. But retail sales continue to come in while not just in La Center, but countywide as well. So the preliminary budget, as I mentioned earlier on, represents an update from the October 5th baseline budget. And it includes the mayor's initiatives as well as other adjustments that were made between that timeframe and last week. Just to hit on a couple of the highlights, the revenue side. The preliminary budget includes an allocation of reserve fund interest. This is a topic that the City Council had discussed a number of times earlier in prior years. The decision was made to include that as a revenue source. Effectively, it doesn't change the bottom line on your reserves as much, the combined reserves of your reserve fund. But it does recognize what you ultimately have to show on your financial statements, which is that interest is revenue source for the combined general fund. We also increased the law and justice sales tax. This is the countywide tax base that you get a portion of. Again, this is a function of receiving the third quarter information. The 2020 amounts are going to come in higher than we had originally estimated and we just transferred some of that increase to the estimate for 2021. And then solid waste and recycling excise tax. So the preliminary budget includes revenue from the implementation of this tax. If you recall, this was a tax that was initially discussed and proposed back in 2017. Was, I think inadvertently omitted from the final ordinance that was passed by council, but it was part of the discussion on the implementation of the excise taxes. We're assuming nine months' worth of that tax and which results in a revenue of about $36,000. I have a little bit more information on this later on. Expenses, a bunch of ups and downs for a net increase of $7,000. The largest reduction being the holding of the patrol position that's currently vacant, holding that vacant through the first quarter of 2021. This is to provide a little bit more time for a little bit more clarity on the card room status and the pandemic before the decision is made to fill that position. That'll be at a minimum of $30,000 savings. There are various adjustments to Public Works, including some adjustments to the correction to the liability insurance amount and an increase in temporary labor primarily. Those were the two largest ones. And then the proposal is to create a lead position in Public Works. That position would get a 5% differential over the current salary, resulting in a $4,600 increase. And then additional building inspection contract support in recognition of both the middle school continuing as well as a need, potential need for the apartment building that is at least forecasted to be developed next year. This also provides additional backup support for vacations and other leave for the building official. So those are the primary changes from the October 5th version. You can see the net amount of change is a decrease in the deficit of roughly 71,000. You'll see that as we go through the presentation. Through a couple of the highlights, many of these points that we've covered before. If you have any questions, please feel free to chime in. But really, on the revenue side and from an overall theme side, I think uncertainty is the buzzword that overrides this year's budget process, specifically with the gambling tax and the closure of the card rooms. Again, the estimate that we're using, the forecast that we're using is 75% of a normal year. Normal being 2018 and 2019, where the revenue was about $1.3 million for those years, supported by the revenue that was attained and their partial opening in July came in fairly well and on a full-month basis would have been close to an annualized rate at that level as well.
Mayor, if I may, did we ever get a response back from the governor or anybody concerning the letter you sent up to the governor's office about the card rooms?
No, Mayor, if you want to respond?
Yeah, I was on mute. I'm sorry. So no, we have not received any kind of response. Contemplating on sending yet a third letter. Of course, the challenge right now is with the COVID numbers continuing to increase. Kind of a balance to, you know, what impact that would have. But we have not received any correspondence, any kind of a response from the letters that have been sent up to the governor's office.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, that's a key element for your revenue source. We're also, I think, as we've shown you before, in implementing a, we think is a conservative forecast for new development, residential development, assuming 60 single-family permits plus half of the multifamily project that's working its way through the permit process. And there's still ample available lots, so the potential is for that 60 plus 72 to be lower than what actually comes in. And then we're also sending no commercial development at the junction. Again, there's the potential for that development to move forward. And they're, I know they're submitting for their final site plan. Still have some paperwork, I think, to be submitted for that. But once that's in, they'll be ready to move forward with their building permit. And the first part of that would be any kind of site work that they wanted to do. Sales tax continues strong, although below 2020 level. So we are forecasting a reduction in 2021 on the sales tax because of the predicted slowdown in development. So on the solid waste and recycling utility tax, it's being proposed at 6%. Again, I think it was inadvertently admitted back in 2017. The taxes on the gross revenue of the service provider, but typically waste connections just shows that as a pass-through onto the customer. All Clark cities except Camas impose this at a minimum of 10%. I'll show you a slide on that in a second. The annual revenue of $45,000 or $36,000, assuming nine months of collections. The amount on a typical household would be about $1.70, depending on what any increases happen for both the, or for the garbage recycling and yard debris service. And it will not only apply to residential, but also to commercial and government customers. So this will apply to the city, the school district as well. So here's a chart showing you the tax rates in the cities in Clark County. Camas is not present here. They don't have a tax on, the only utility tax they have is on gas, natural gas. And then just reference a recently released Association of Washington surveys. The, there are 141 cities in that survey indicated that they impose a solid waste and recycling utility tax. The average rate was 9.2, the median was 6, which is what your rate will be. There's 270 cities in Washington. Not all of them responded to the survey. But the pretty big sample here of the cities that do impose that tax.
Hey, Paul, who comes up with the percentage that we're going to charge and how do we come up with that 6%?
That percentage is the same percentage that you have for your other utility excise taxes. And that was the presentation, that was the proposal back in 2017 to implement the telephone, the electricity and the natural gas tax at 6%. 6% is actually the statutory maximum for those utilities. You can actually obviously implement a garbage tax. There is no limit for garbage water or sewer or stormwater. Those are more locally assessed limits. And so the 6%, which was the statutory limit for telephone, natural gas and electricity was the proposed rate at the time for the garbage and recycling.
Okay, so we just take it from there and put it onto this? Okay.
Yep. And that's another reason for the three months. It gives us some time to work with the provider to get the tax implemented once the City Council, assuming the City Council approves the ordinance. So that's the utility tax. That's probably the larger change. But again, it's a, or something that was contemplated and I think intended back in 2017. Again, uncertainty on the revenue, the caution on the vacancy, that patrol position gives you some time to wait until the card room status clarifies, gives you some time to talk about the police department assessment that's being completed. On the community development sides, lower development activity means lower permit-related costs. You'll see a slight reduction in those costs. Still, a high reliance on consulting planner for current development. And there's also a number of long-range planning projects that you're required to complete. So those are included in the budget. So not all of the reduction in activity will reduce costs at the same pace. And if you look back over the last five years, you've actually, between the department assessments and various restructuring, the staffing's been reduced by over two positions since 2017. So you made a number of changes. I'll go through those in a minute with the pie charts that I've show you. But you've done some significant restructuring of your budget over the last five years with the card room closures. And that includes a reduction of two positions overall. So sticking with community development for a second, this is a somewhat of a 30,000-foot look at their revenues and expenses. The revenues are definitely permit-related community development revenues. The expenses include expenses in other areas, including long-range planning. There's some capital project expenses here as well. But if you compare the total revenues to the total expenses in the 2021 budget, you'll see a deficit of just under $185,000. That compares to a deficit through the third quarter of 2020, which you'll see at your council meeting tonight, of $250,000 and a $227,000 deficit from last year. So some improvement in terms of the overall deficit, which means that while the revenues have gone up significantly, the expenses go up somewhat proportionately. You've made some restructuring changes here as well. But overall, and I want to caveat this is that you typically never will get to a full 100% cost recovery. And a cost recovery analysis would exclude all the long-range planning costs, but add in some of the other support services costs like accounting, information technology, costs that aren't included directly in their budget. So, but this is, like I said, a real high-level rough look at the cost recovery for your permit-related functions and how the 2021 budget relates to the prior years. A couple more highlights, additional temporary labor in Public Works. We talked about that. I think a resumption of normal park and street maintenance and get moving on other projects. Technology upgrades are included in this budget. There's some website enhancements and it's time to replace the city's core server. And that'll help improve the operation and security of city software. You're also having multiple labor union activities going on. You've got ongoing negotiations with the labor union coming up. You've got a contract that's expiring next year as well as the arbitration with the sworn police group. So those are somewhat one-time costs that are also funded in the 2021 budget. And as we've talked before, we're creating a new general government department to better track and manage some of the, really primarily law and justice services that used to be in police. There are a couple of other programs that are inter-local service related that were in finance that we're separating out into a new general government department to better categorize those costs. On the utility funds, no increase in sewer rates, and we confirmed this today for the sixth year in a row. And this is really a dividend coming from the new development and the efficiencies that you've implemented over the last three or four years. And those translate into a forecast that shows the utility fund able to make substantial inroads on the general fund debt and fully fund the capital projects that are on their 20-year horizon. That includes membrane replacement planned for 2022 to the tune of $1 million. There's a plant expansion in 2024 that's $2.6 million. And then there's an over $6 million plant expansion out in, so let me get to my number here. 2035, $6.6 million. And all of those are funded based on the conservative forecast for growth that we're showing in the sewer fund forecast. Also on the stormwater fund, there is a fee increase of 2% included in that. That was actually part of your adoption of the stormwater fee. You had a three-year rate increase included in that ordinance. Back in 2019, the rate will go to $10.40. Again, that same Association of Washington City survey shows the median for the cities that impose the stormwater utility tax at 12.09. I did a quick look for the Clark County cities. Battlegrounds at $12.08, Camas is 12.40. Ridgefield's the only one that's lower there at 9.53, Washougal's at 16.59 and Vancouver's at 11.80. So again, all of those cities impose a stormwater maintenance fee and all but Ridgefield are higher than what yours will be next year. On the capital fund, got another slide later that shows you really how strong those revenues have come in on the capital side. And it's really related to that 125 residential permits that have come in. That revenue will allow you to complete the current capital projects. But a little bit of caution on new capital investment, some projects that have been pulled off the list. But those that are on the list, excuse me, are Cary Ford of the Forest Street, Breezy Creek. I think I misspell this almost every time. The engineering for that culvert replacement and road widening and then finishing up the Stone Creek Drive reconstruction project. New transportation projects. There's a Pacific Highway path. This is a safe routes to schools grant proposal. And then La Center Road reconstruction. Both of those are grant-dependent and would move forward subject to approval of those grants. There's also a handful of small parks, police and public works facility projects. Things like generator connections. Police has some security improvements, both video and audio parks. There are just some replacement projects, things that need to be done for safety and hazard maintenance. The new city hall renovation project is the largest project being proposed, new project being proposed at 1.2 million. That's in the permitting process now and is slated to go to bid, hopefully around the first quarter of next year. As I mentioned, the planned action ordinance that was Phase 1 that was proposed this year for downtown and the Holly Park projects, there were three small Holly Park maintenance projects, about 125,000 combined, were put on hold and not included in the 2021 budget. We do have a patrol vehicle replacement, but again, that would be put on hold until the second quarter. This is also one that was tentatively included in the 2020 budget and was deferred to 2021.
Paul, this is Doug. I've got a question regarding the planned action ordinance. We had also talked about designating the junction area and the freeway as being the planned action area. Is this being proposed to come off the table?
I defer to the mayor, but I believe, yes, that the planned action ordinance, you do have a sub-area plan up at the junction, which helps to guide development. But the planned action ordinance in terms of the benefits that that provides to streamline the application process, the permitting process, I believe that would not be happening in 2021.
Okay, because I don't want to do anything to slow down the development out there at the junction.
Yeah, so Doug, that, there were two planned action areas. Studies contemplated, but not at the, one's not at the junction. It's at Timmin Road. So it was the downtown core area and Timmin Road. The sub-area plan is pretty much intact at the junction. So there wasn't any additional planning as part of those planned action areas. Again, we've put a pause on those two projects until, you know, we get at least into Phase 3 of the they start Washington. But for now, they've been put on pause, but like you, I'm anxious to get those back up on the, so the city can start working on.
Yeah, and I just want to chime in on that as well because I'm like what Doug was saying and I'm in agreement. This is something that streamlines a revenue source, yet we have a city hall that's 1.2, 1.3 million that doesn't generate revenue. So in a time that we need, I, to me, I almost think that we should be going more along the lines of revenue sources and pushing those forward rather than ones that don't.
So, Congressman Struthen, you may recall that, you know, when the council was originally So council member Strubin, you may recall that, you know, when the council was originally talking about the purchase of the TDS building for the new city hall, we also contemplated the leasing out of the existing city hall along with the the current public works building. And then, as it turned out, the lower level of the the new city hall will be vacant as well and available for leasing. So we I look at those as opportunities for revenue streams as well. Do, you know, again, the reason for pausing the planned action areas is really just a matter of issue we're having with COVID. But we'll be anxious to get those back on on schedule once that we get into phase three.
So potentially, to the extent that that you do get approved for phase three, you could have a budget amendment during the year to potentially bring those forward to but not not on, not in the preliminary budget.
Correct. Okay. Yep, thank you.
So here's a pie chart, two pie charts, obviously. The one on the right represents the pie chart for your 2021 preliminary budget, total of just over $3.7 million. And I think this was discussed at the Budget Advisory Committee meeting to show the contrast of just five years ago in 2016. Obviously, the most dramatic difference is the gambling card room. These numbers are really small. Excuse me. But over $3.1 million and 69% of your 2016 revenue came from the card rooms. We're anticipating 975,000. In 2016 represented 20% of the revenue. Your property sales and utility taxes in 2021 represent 36%. So you've gone and identified alternative revenue sources to essentially backfill the reduction, part of the reduction. And then the development has been the other big change. Back in 2016, I don't have the number, but I think you were, you know, barely into double digits on the single family permitting side. And as a result, your licenses and permit revenues have gone up significantly, you know, by over $500,000 since that time. And then, in addition, one big change is this transfer from the sewer fund being added at $400,000, so getting a return on your prior investment in the sewer utility. So those primary changes, the utility tax at roughly 300,000, the sewer at 400,000 and fees at 500,000 have helped you offset the decline of over $2 million in your gambling tax. So wanted to show you that, not just from a where are we getting our money now, but also how does that compare to where we got our money five years ago? A chart with the numbers, so the historical amounts, this is the major revenue sources down the left hand side and the annual amounts and changes across the top, and then the share of the budget. What I want to do is focus on the 2021 budget and the dollar and percent change. So property taxes, actually, this 539 will make a slight change to this in the budget that you see on November 2nd, I think, the first is a Sunday, to 544. There's a slight increase from the latest information that we got from the assessors office that will provide an additional 5,000. It's actually related to revenue that comes from, most typically from subdivisions that get recorded mid year. So they
Paul, if I could just, for the city clerk, council member Paul has lost his audio. Could you check to see if something's been muted?
No, I lost mine for a few minutes as well, mayor, and it did finally come back. And Doug, maybe, I don't know if you're using your phone or not, but I I've got my phone up going. But I did lose it for a little bit of the presentation as well.
I lost it as well, just for probably a minute.
Okay, is anybody else having issues with the audio Paul's presentation? Doug, have you resumed audio?
Councilmember Baugh, can you hear us?
You may want to log off and log back on.
I'm sitting next to another phone. I can call his cell real quick and see if he tries out.
Continue on, we can try to work with council member Baugh.
Okay. As I was saying, we've got a $5,000 increase that actually dates to 2020 from the levy that relates to supplemental taxes that are primarily the result of subdivisions that get recorded during the year and the fact that 10 lots fully serviced have an assessed value that's greater than a 10 acres of undeveloped land. So that's the primary reason for the increase. So we'll we'll add that in in the final version that you see next week. But other primary changes, the 48,000 on the sorry, the other amount here is primarily a function of new construction. So new construction and a small amount from annexations, and then that $5,000 that we saw from the other subdivisions. 48,000 increase in utility, 36 of that again is from the new solid waste and recycling tax. As we talked about, sales tax going down year over year. We have to up this 2020 estimate based on October's performance again, but looking at 520,000 or more, but 456 in 2021. And again, that assumes a continuation of the the middle school. Other revenue flat for the local criminal justice sales taxes. I mentioned we up that a little bit based on what we think 2020 is going to come in at. And then the gambling tax, a significant increase, but the 975 compares to a million three from the 2020 budget and from 2018 and 19, the comparable numbers. On the licenses and permits and charges for goods and services, those are about a wash. We're expecting a little bit lower revenue in 2021. That is partly due to having that. It's not a bigger decrease, partly because of the multifamily permit application that we're planning to have for 2021. If that happens in 2020, instead, these decreases will likely be larger. Intergovernmental decrease in this 280,000 is that COVID relief funding. So we're anticipating not having the COVID relief funding in 2021. In addition, there'll be a reduction in your city assistance payment from the state as well. One thing that I noted in your intergovernmental revenue from 2016 is it's about the same amount that we're anticipating for 2021. So in terms of the revenue that you're getting from the cities are getting from the state of Washington, pretty much flat, even though your population has gone up considerably. Charges for goods and services covered that one. And then the miscellaneous, this includes the the increase includes the 30,000 from the reserve fund interest. So total revenues, $3.7 million, an increase of 660,000 over where we think will end this year. But you can see it's less than what was budgeted for 2020, somewhat in between the 2019 actuals and where we think 2020 will end up. So that's the revenue, same kind of presentation on the pie charts for the expense side. Not as much of a dramatic shift in this, although it was sort of a substitution effect. Police is still the largest share, roughly 40% both years. Public Works combined at 29%, 30%. Public Works combined here, much smaller at 17%. And community development really taking over as the second largest. Again, this 896,000, there's a $700,000 of revenue behind that that increase. And you can see back 243,000 back in 2016. So there's a pie chart showing the distribution of what is just under 4.1 million of general fund expenses. On the number side, again, looking at year over year changes, finance anticipating a small increase. This is again primarily related to the labor negotiations and expenses associated with that. Offsetting that increase would be a decline in some of the one time accounting support that you received in 2020. Otherwise, fairly small dollar amount increases in a number of categories. The percentages can be a little bit higher. I think 2020 estimate is still got some variability to it. The decline, as we talked about in community development, 55,000 of that decline is a one time expense associated with with a personnel decision. And then some increases for public works, both on the operations, streets and and parks. Rolled up just under 4.1 million, $112,000 more than where we think 2020 will end up. 2.8% increase overall. Coming in with an adjusted general fund net revenue of $329,000 deficit compared to where we think will be at 879 for this year. And this 329 is just roughly the same amount as the difference between the 1.3 million normal gambling tax revenue and the 975 that we've got in the budget. That would be 325,000. So absent any impact on the pandemic, on the gambling, on the card rooms, the budget would be roughly balanced. I'll pause there and see if you have any questions on the general fund revenue and expense estimates for the preliminary budget.
How accurate are the numbers? Because we got at our last council meeting that 2018, the it wasn't reconciled and they were not all the way through 19. So I'm trying to figure out how accurate all these numbers actually are.
I don't know that I can answer that definitively. These came off of your financials, the preliminary financials. So those are the numbers that that have been reviewed and produced from the detailed work that's being undertaken now. And I would say they both showed deficits, but if you look three years prior to that, the cumulative surplus was the 1.6 million. Any other questions before I move on? One more thing on the general fund, if you look at the six year forecast, there's the 2021 budget. So the blue bars in the left hand axis are the total reserves from your general fund and your reserve fund. The red line is the expenses and the green line are the revenues. And the 2021 budget, there's the difference is that 329,000 actually narrows a little bit over the next three years, actually gets to a surplus in 2024. If you recall, we have the junction development, the new hotel and the new retail coming online and being constructed in 2023 and being new revenue, general fund revenue in 2024 for the operations. And then we have a slowdown in new development in the forecast, which creates deficits, which grow to, you know, 600,000 or so in 2026.
Just a reference. How can we put that in, Paul? How can we put the hotel and stuff at the junction if they don't have funding? How can we even base that? Because that's kind of like saying, hey, we're going to do the sub area planned at Timmins Road. And by 2024, we could have a million different stores operating out of there. I mean, really, is that anything relevant into the budget at this point? If there's no actual funding for it?
So two things, two things, one, it's it's not in the budget, it's in the forecast. And the forecast takes advantage of an actual site plan application. So it's much different than Timmin Road and other areas. There's actually a property owner and a developer that's made a proposal. I think the comment that I made earlier is that the reason we didn't have that coming in earlier, either in 21 or 22, was because of the state of the pandemic and the challenges, I think, related to the hospitality industry. I have no insights as to their financing. But if they're going to move forward with the permitting process, they'll have a fully entitled development next to a large regional casino. And that environment's a lot different than, you know, your other run of the mill hotel development. So I think it's reasonable, both from a standpoint of the developer and the property owner moving forward with their permitting process to get entitlement as well as the investments that the college is making in the casino to include it in your six year forecast. Where it happens, I think, is still a question. And I will concede that, you know, depending on what happens with the pandemic and the hospitality industry, you know, it's it's still somewhat of a question of when it when it will happen.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
So onto the utility funds. Again, a real positive story here for the budget for the sewer fund anticipating 1.4 million. Fairly significant increase in revenues. This is again reflecting mostly the population increase that you've had, the new permit, new developments, as well as some of the other revenue that you have. So 1.4 million of revenue, operating expenses growing, also reflective of the the increase in new material as well as wages and other costs. The transfer out growing to 500,000, that's 400,000 to the general fund and 100,000 to their to the sewer capital fund, but still a surplus of 72,000 proposed in the budget. And on the stormwater side, revenues, even with the proposed increase, and this may have to be updated with the 2% increase in the monthly fees, but showing a surplus of 16,000 in 2021. On the capital funds, here's a small print list. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at this in in larger format. But this includes all of the listed capital projects. We've talked about most of these. There's a La Center Road Streetlight Study included here for a small amount. This is one that had been included in prior years. The junction sign is also a carry forward. We didn't talk about that before, but the others were items that we mentioned. There's the police vehicle, four projects in the sewer capital. The annual payment for the pump station to the school district is the largest amount. Also looking at updating the junction sewer plan so we can get an update on those cost estimates that I mentioned earlier for the major expansion projects that are on the horizon. And then a couple of minor actuator and software system upgrade or other projects. And then one of the things you have to do when you're running a stormwater utility is look at illicit connection testing, and that's planned for next year at $15,000. So a total of 4.8 million on the capital projects. And again, deferred, several projects deferred. And again, deferred, several projects deferred from the list from this year. Wanted to show you this, this is the revenue and the expense in the beginning balances, so showing you that from the real estate excise tax. Fund balance beginning at four fifty, ending at three forty-eight. But the unrestricted city funds picking up the lion's share, and that's the primarily the City Hall project at one point two million. And then traffic impact fees and park impact fees coming in strong this year, leading to large beginning balances, able to more than adequate to fund the projects that are proposed in the capital budget.
Um, excuse me for a second, I I think this one kind of goes towards the mayor as well. So when we were talking about this, the new city hall and the full renovation. I think it was back in June or something like that, twenty-nineteen, when Johansson Wing Architects came on board to draw it up. We stated a few things we wanted in there and that we'd like to see. And it was, if I remember correctly, we were going to get to see all this stuff and make sure it's something that we all agreed upon and maybe be able to show it off to residents and such. Is this still going to happen before we vote on just saying, here's one point two million dollars? Go ahead and send it out to bid and here's a permit and don't worry about it, we got this covered. Are we going to get to see this beforehand? Guess is my question.
Well, yes, absolutely. I mean, there's been multiple presentations by the architect. And as we've gone through the project, updates as to, you know, what's the improvements to the building are going to be. We will be seeing that again. I mean, with the drawings are complete, they will be ready to go out to bid here shortly. And then, of course, once the bids back in, then the council's going to review everything. So, yeah, there'll be, again, multiple opportunities for the council and the community to look at how this is all being put together. So.
And at that point, are we able to, because if I remember correctly, once we vote for the budget, it's allowed to be spent at that point. So are we allowed to be able to pull that back and go, you know, maybe we don't need to spend this much, or maybe we need to put more into it? Or is this it? And on top of that, there was three hundred thousand dollars that was allocated for twenty-twenty on doing this building. Is this three hundred thousand dollars, the one point two million, is that on top of the three hundred thousand? So does it actually make it at about a one point five? Or is this included in the three hundred thousand that was allocated from twenty-nineteen for twenty-twenty?
I don't have a complete accounting of the three hundred thousand right now in front of me. We can review that, but one point two million is in addition to anything that's been budgeted to date. But I don't know where we were with, where we are with the three hundred, but.
So it's roughly sixty thousand's been spent in twenty-twenty, that that number's in my head. So haven't spent the full three hundred. The other thing I would mention is that council would approve the construction project. So when the bids are coming in, the contract would have to be approved by council. And at that point, you would weigh in on any dollar amounts and what the project budget would be.
Okay, thank you.
All that, all that one point two million is really the architect's, architect's estimate of what the cost would be. So, you know, we'll have to wait to see what the bids come in at to see how accurate that actually, in fact, is going to be. It's just part of the process.
So the last two slides are just, Bud, next two slides are the ordinance attachment preview. I don't necessarily want to go through this, it reflects what we've talked about so far. But just wanted to give you a sense of this is what will be in the ordinance on December second that you will approve. Will obviously have the final numbers and have a better estimate of what the fund balances are beginning and ending. But this is effectively what you will include in in the budget adoption. And then lastly, wanted to close with some comments from the Budget Advisory Committee. As you're aware, we began meeting in May, had six very productive meetings with them, shared information, provided feedback. And also just continued to update them on the quarterly financial updates as well. Their comments are, they would endorse the use of the reserves in twenty-twenty-one, given the uncertainty around the card room operations and the gambling tax, reflection on the timing, amount and type of new development that's really critical and also uncertain. And that will have an impact on both the twenty-twenty-one amounts, but also the forecasts. I think as Councilmember Strobin mentioned as well. And I think primarily what they would do is encourage the city council to, again, monitor and respond as needed. If the three-month closure of the card room doesn't seem to be coming to fruition, if it goes longer than that, then there needs to be a discussion and a response to that. At least a conscious discussion in response to that, those changes, both on the revenue side and the increase in the deficit. So with that, the next steps, the preliminary budget will be November second, actually on a Monday. The final, it'll include the final updates to the preliminary budget. It'll be available to the public later that week. The revenue public hearing will be on November eighteenth. There'll be more information on all the different revenue initiatives. And then the public hearing on the proposed budget will be at your meeting on December second and with possible adoption of the ordinance at that meeting, so.
At that meeting, real quick, are we able to push off the vote for the budget to the second meeting in December? Or is that, I I can't remember, does it have to be passed before the end of December or is it January first?
Yeah, it's the end of December, you do have a second meeting in December, so you can take that discussion to the second meeting in December if you choose.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing on the budget, though, has to occur before the first Monday in December.
And I think we've got, is the second, the second would be the first Wednesday, so I think, I think we're okay.
Yeah, we are with the current schedule.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul, thank you. Any questions from the council for Mr. Lewis this evening?
Very thorough as usual, Paul, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Want to acknowledge the work of of staff, Maria Spaginski, providing information and their contributions as well. So thanks to staff and the Budget Advisory Committee for putting, helping put this together.
Thank you.
I want to echo those comments as well, Paul. It's, yeah, it's been, a lot of work's been put into it by city staff, of course, you. And then, and I really do appreciate all the efforts and and time that the Budget Advisory Committee has contributed to this as well. So I think just a good job all the way around. I appreciate it very much, thank you. So you got that completed right exactly at almost six-thirty. So just in time for us to begin our regularly scheduled city council meeting. I'm going to ask the council if you need a few minutes before we begin, or are we okay just to move forward?
I'm okay.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'd like a quick break if we can.
What's that?
I said, I would like a quick break if we can.
Okay, well, we'll just, we'll take a five-minute break. We will begin the city council meeting at six-thirty-five, so we'll take a break, okay? Everyone will be just five minutes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Like, today is Wednesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. I like to call this regular city council meeting, regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. We could all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, liberty, justice, and
Could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Boff?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Present. Next consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any comments for this evening?
Yes, we do.
So before I start, I should just mention that because we're having virtual town halls, the city has requested for all public comments to be emailed to the clerk prior to the city council meeting. And the clerk will be reading those at the council meetings. The, after the emails have been read, staff, appropriate staff will respond to the people that have sent in the emails and be addressed that way. Go ahead, clerk, thank you.
Okay, the first one comes from Jan Verinder, City Council. As I've listened to political speakers over the past several years, I reflected on how people can experience things differently. One theme I heard repeatedly was of a fear versus empowerment. I realize that those two words are likely not part of Sean Wright's last PowerPoint presentation regarding transportation for Fourth Street, but they should be. I biked for years using my bike for transportation since college, when I couldn't afford a car. Now I volunteer with the Vancouver Police on the Now Bike Team. I'm the editor of the Vancouver Bicycle Club, and we ride all parts of our county and into Oregon for exercise and fun. La Center has the best donuts in Clark County. If I sound fearless, I'm not, but empowered, yes, by decades of experience. How do we empower new riders, whether younger or older? We look at their fears, examine our goals, and adapt plans to fit their needs. Exercise equals healthier, happy, sorry, happier people. Cleaner air, quieter environment, less congestion. Every mayor's and citizen's goal. You must want kids, families, and average citizens to ride to the parks, schools, and the library along Fourth Street because your plans show bike lanes. Good goal, but how do you overcome the fear factor so that people actually use the lanes? White painted lines do nothing, are doing nothing, but paint won't make a novice rider or a parent with squirrely kids hours. Feel or be safe. Narrowing traffic lanes slows traffic. Good feels is safer. And not at the expense of the cyclist who acts like the unofficial speed bump. However, adding physical buffers between cars and bikes empowers riders who otherwise feel the inherent fear of riding next to big metal friends who outweigh them twenty times. Creating a genuinely protected cycle track makes riders feel safe and empowered because they are safer. Your transportation decision for Fourth Street is a statement about your vision of the future for the city. Please put the health and safety of all our citizens at heart of that vision. The next one comes from Dave Holmes, the superintendent of La Center School District. Mayor Thornton and La Center City Council, I'm writing you today to give you the district's perspective on the development of the above intersection. I know that there has been much debate in our community recently about the best alternatives in terms of the safety of various intersections and controls. I'm sure you're also aware that this intersection is the main exit for our buses and that many of our students and their parents traverse this intersection daily. It is of utmost concern that the safety of our students be the deciding factor and the ultimate determination of how this intersection and the thoroughfare be constructed. The district is not in a position to have the research available to us concerning pedestrian safety around various options. Likewise, we are also not in a position to weigh in on those options without that research. To that point, the district must rely on you to make your decision about the construction of the intersection based on our student safety and not other less vital concerns such as cost, appearance of, or maximum vehicle loads per hour. The La Center School District and the city of La Center have had a longstanding positive relationship for many years, and I look forward to continuing that relationship. To that end, I offer my help in any way you might see fit moving forward to work in partnership with the city for our mutual benefit. The next one comes from Sean Wright. It's disappointing to see an over five million dollar roadway project that connects our downtown, three schools, two parks, and a library to not meet Vision Zero safety goals for cyclists and pedestrians. The city refused to send me drawing files for their plans, so I simply redrew their plan on my own modifications. I also used drone imagery to draw a master plan showing a cycle track connecting all of our parks, schools, and downtown. This conceptual plan will be entered into the record. The current city plan shows new cycle lanes delineated with white paint, sharing the pavement with automobiles. Over ninety percent of our working residents commute out of town by automobiles. These facilities will primarily serve the children of our town. Every other traffic engineer I have spoken with agrees that white striping is not fitting for children along an arterial street with several schools and parks. With automobiles being the number one cause of death for children four to twenty-four and six thousand pedestrian deaths a year in the U.S., I would not allow my daughter to cycle on these facilities, and I don't know any parents that would prefer it over a separated cycle track. Every day in the city I work for, I see the residents cycling on the sidewalk directly adjacent to bicycle lanes. It's simply safer and more comfortable. I fear that we will see the same thing along Fourth Street. These bicycle lanes are simply useless. No children will use them due to the associated danger. They will only serve to widen the road and increase street crossing distances for pedestrians. It feels like the city is trying to check the complete streets box without actually putting in safe facilities for our children. My daughter is extremely blessed to be able to walk through the park to the elementary school with my wife, but very few children have this luxury, and eventually she will have to bike to the new middle school. It's important to note that Tony mentioned at the last council meeting that applications for construction funding for the federal state block grant were filled out using the plan currently shown. I'm unsure if this was implying that the plan cannot be changed. However, I confirm with the Federal Aid Programs Team Leader of the Federal Highway Administration, Christopher Newman, that the changes I have proposed would not affect funding. It's also important to note that roundabouts reduce injuries crashes by ninety percent. And despite having a higher upfront cost, they tend to pay for themselves when the capitalized cost of signals are taken into account. I urge the council members to review the plan I have entered into the record and advocate for safer infrastructure for the children who want nothing more than to learn and play safely along this corridor. Mobility should never come at the cost of safety. Safety is not expensive, and one life lost is too many. That's all of them.
Thank you. I do just want to mention to the council, and I think you're all aware, that PBS, the design engineer for the Fourth Street project, along with the city, is currently conducting a virtual open house on the city website. There is an eight-minute video on that, as part of that open house, that can be viewed by the, by residents of La Center. And of course, all these comments will be presented to PBS in the city, and they will be commenting on them appropriately. So I just wanted to make that comment. So next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have just a few things to review with the council this evening. First of them are just some reminders on the, on the calendar. I just want to remind all the council members that our next city council meeting will be next Wednesday, November fourth. There's been some adjustments to the calendar because of the Thanksgiving holiday and Christmas holiday. So I just want to review that again with the council. So, and that the, prior to the November fourth city council meeting, we will be having another work session beginning at five-thirty. Our next city council meeting in November will be November eighteenth. For December, the two city council members, the two city council dates will be December second. That'll be the first one, and the second one will be December. That'll be the first one, and the second one will be December 16th, which will be the third Wednesday of December. So I want to make sure that the council members adjust their calendars accordingly. A date that I want to share with everyone is that my next town hall, the mayor's town hall, will be a virtual town hall. It will be on November 5th, which is next Thursday, and it will begin at 6:00 P.M. And it'll be a virtual town hall, very similar to the last one that I had for earlier this month. One other item I want to share with the council is on October 19th, I did receive a letter from Mr. Matt Ransom. He's the executive director for the Southwest Washington Regional Transportation Council, and I'll just read this to the council. Southwest Transportation Council is pleased to inform you that the following project was selected for a grant award by the RTC Board of Directors on October 6th of 2020. The grant award is for the Forest Street Widening Breezy Creek Culver Project, and the grant is for $1,045,000. So I want to thank city staff for all their hard work in putting in the application for that, and I'm really excited that we were successful in getting that grant. But I think that brings the funding for the Forest Street Widening Project now to just over $2.5 million. And there'll be more discussion about that with Mr. Swanson's community development report a little bit later this morning. So that's what I have this evening for the council. Next on the agenda is the attorney's report of the city attorney. Community Bronson?
Good evening, everyone. What I'd like to spend my time with during the attorney's report is reviewing the draft process to fill the vacancy on the city council with you. I sent that out in an email last week, and hopefully you've had time to review it. But it's just a proposal or a draft. The process to fill the vacancy is the council's process, and you're the ones who will decide what process we will follow. But what we drafted for you consists of conducting outreach for two weeks. So that would be through November 18, closing at 5:00 P.M. The outreach would consist of a press release, posting the notice of the vacancy on the city's website with information about how to apply, and advertising in the Columbian, which is our newspaper of record, with a published advertisement once a week for two weeks. You were, I think, in the council packet, there was a copy of the press release and a copy of the application that was proposed for applying for the position. The application itself just consists of pretty basic information, you know, name, contact information, address, confirming that the applicant meets the qualifications required to serve on the council. That's being a registered voter in the city of Le Center and having continuously lived in the city for one year prior to the date of the appointment. There's three fairly basic questions. One asking about background, another asking why you're seeking the appointment, and a third about whether or not there's any information that should be disclosed that might attract heightened public scrutiny. Applicants are given the option of submitting a list of endorsements and up to three letters of reference. But the application period would be proposed to close November 18 at 5:00 P.M. The next step in the process would be taken at the December 2nd meeting. At this meeting, the council could meet in an executive session to evaluate the qualification of the candidates to serve on the council. There's some discussion in that draft proposal about if there's a large number of applicants or applications received, over 10. A process for narrowing down the number of candidates who would be considered for interviews. It's probably unlikely that we would receive more than 10 applications, but you never know. So it's good to have a process identified to narrow the field. And here would be council members submitting individually to the clerk a list of the candidates that they would like to have considered for interviews. And then the clerk would compile the list and provide the council with the 10 most frequently selected candidates. But again, that process may be unnecessary. Going back to the executive session on December 2nd for a moment, again, that executive session is limited to evaluating the qualifications of the applicants. It is not to compare candidate A against candidate C and the relative merits of the candidates, but to individually assess the strengths and weaknesses of a particular candidate. There is no voting that is to occur in the executive session. There's no ranking that's to occur in the executive session. What would happen after the executive session is you would meet in an open session, and that's when you would discuss the candidates who you would like to have interviewed. Maybe there's few enough candidates that you would interview them all? Maybe not, but we would do that discussion and selection in the open public meeting. The next step then is the interview meeting itself, which would be at the next meeting, December 16. In that meeting, it outlines how the interview process would occur. Essentially, there would be 20-minute segments for each candidate. The candidate will do an opening presentation. The candidate would then be asked questions by council members. Each council member would be submitting a question and asking that question in the open public meeting. The sort of formal scripted question and answer period could be followed by more informal follow-up question and answer based on the candidate's responses to your questions. After you do the interview process, you could meet again in an executive session, again to evaluate the qualifications of the candidates. If you did that, again, limitation is on reviewing the qualification of the candidates. There's no voting in the executive session, there's no ranking in the executive session. You go back out from the executive session to the open session, and that's where you have the balloting, the selection of the candidate to fill the vacancy. The thing to be mindful of, I think, is that the selection has to occur out of before January 11 of 2021. Otherwise, the process defaults to the county council. So that's the process that's outlined. Happy to hear any comments or try to answer any questions that the council may have.
And Bronson, this is Randy, I got a couple items here.
Sure.
Can you go back up to your first page, item number three? Just a little housekeeping item here. Confirmation applicant as registered voter has continuously lived within the city limits of Le Center. Because they could have a PO ZIP code and not live within the city limits.
Okay.
I think you need to clarify that, just so we don't have ambiguity there. Because the school board, you can live outside the city limits, but you're in the school district.
I understand what you're saying, and we'll make that clear in all the materials that are posted and distributed. Thank you.
And then the other item is, and I've been through a few of these, including my own, who makes up the questions?
Who submits the questions?
Who makes them up? Who designs the questionnaire? Or the questions that we interview with? Do we all use the same set of questions? Do we make up our own questions?
I believe what I, what was suggested in this outline, we'll flip it now to see that included it. But the, each council member would submit a, you know, their preferred question and a second backup question. And then, so each council member's question would then be asked by that council member in the interview session. And if two council members ask the same question, one of the backup questions would be used instead.
So we make up, we make up our own questions then?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And again, it's just as.
Yeah, are the interviews and, okay, that's fine, thank you, that's what I needed to know.
Hey Bronson, this is Doug, I've got a couple of questions as well. I've been through one of these in the past, and when we did that, each of the applicants was interviewed in public session. They were, they were in the room one at a time. So the various applicants didn't hear the questions being read. And I think you've touched on that in your outline. Do you have any suggestions on how we do that with a remote situation now? What stops someone from listening in on someone else's interview?
Yeah, that's, we talked about that, and I don't know that there's a way to positively know that a candidate did not listen in through somebody else's device. You know, to some extent, it's a, you know, merit or honesty system in this virtual setting. You know, the only thing I could think of is sequestering the candidates somewhere and, you know, making sure they don't have any devices and they remain in that sequestered location until they're interviewed. I mean, that's, in my experience, when we were in the real in-person world, that's exactly what we did. But in the virtual world, I think you almost, you know, have to rely on integrity and honesty.
Bronson, this is Randy, could they, could they meet at, just the candidates, as well as a monitor meet at city hall? And we would interview them one at a time while the other one, the monitor, would make sure they were out of the room?
Logistically, that probably could be done. I mean, we could set it up where their, you know, council would still be meeting virtually, but the candidates could be at city hall, and they could be interviewed online. And a monitor being there to assure that no one is listening in during the interviews.
That the other candidates, or candidates would be sequestered without audiovisual connection?
Right.
I think that would work.
We just have to, you know, be city staff having to watch them.
And Bronson, I've got a second question under voting. You've indicated and proposed on here the balloting will continue until a nominee receives a majority of votes. And since there are four council members now, does this mean that the mayor would not be breaking, it would break a tie?
No, in the event of a tie, the mayor would be able to vote.
He would, okay, okay, thank you.
Can I ask why the process seems to be a lot longer than in the past?
I really can't speak to as in the past because I wasn't the city attorney until February. So, you know, I have, you have asked me about the potential of shortening the process, and I said that you could shorten the application period to something less than two weeks.
Right, well, what I'm asking Bronson is because it seems like there's two meetings before we get to vote. It'll be voted on in the second meeting, the 16th there. Like when I was done, and I'm not sure how Randy was done, or any else that was appointed, we submitted, and then we were interviewed, and then it was voted on that night. And the reason I ask this is because we do have some important, you know, the budget coming up, and at this point, with four council members, the mayor becomes the tiebreaker. And I'd just like to see another council member in here to help make that decision.
So, I mean, the budget hearing is scheduled for December 2nd. So to select another council member before December 2nd would mean you'd be doing it November 18th, and I, that would be very difficult, I think.
I think it's unrealistic to ask a new council member to even be fully aware and knowledgeable enough to vote on a budget.
I agree with that. Liz, I was thrown, I was kind of thrown into some of this stuff right there at the end of September, beginning of October of that year. So that's the only reason I brought it up. Yeah, and I understand what you're saying, Liz, I, there is that concern as well, that there is a short amount of time there. But I would think that somebody that is actually applying for the position would be up to current events and what's happening with the council at that point in time.
I'm sure they're familiar with what's happening, but if I were to be voted on in any particular fashion, and it came to this point in time where you were voting on something as imperative as the next year's budget, and you came on the month before, I would certainly be abstaining.
Tommy, when you came on, you had the, you had a couple months of exposure on it. This would be the same, kind of the same night or just two weeks, and that's really not enough to understand the budget process in my mind.
You know, I would have to agree with council members Servini and Williams.
It gets into ethics and integrity. And, you know, that speaks loudly about each and every one of us as council members and whether we're voted on or whether we're elected. When we can't make fully knowledgeable decisions on any topic coming before us, that's when it's critical that we abstain and make it very clear for the record the reason why. There's nothing bad about it, it's just clearly stating, you know, the timing of this particular person leaving the position has left us in a position of bringing them through a process of onboarding. And, you know, I don't think it should hinge on whether they should or shouldn't be pressured into voting for something as critical as this.
Okay, point well taken.
The only other thought that I have on maybe condensing the process would be that if hypothetically you only had two or three applicants, presumably you could do the evaluation and interviews in one meeting instead of two of them. So that might be something that we wait and see how many applicants there are, and we can say that the interview would be either December 2nd or 16th. That would be one possible revision you could consider.
I think, as you said, Bronson, we won't know until we really get further into it with the number of applicants that we receive, and that will really be what dictates what the next steps should be.
I think getting the application stream started so we can look at them, have time to look at them, and filter out any that we don't, are just totally wrong, that might be helpful to, and that would shorten the process. and filter out any that we don't, that are just totally wrong, that might be helpful to, and that would shorten the process during the meeting.
So for going forward, um, we'll, we'll make the clarification that the qualification is within the city limits for the year prior. And then, uh, what's the council desire, uh, uh, sequestering candidates during interviews? Is that the process that you want to follow or not?
I think we should and I'd like what, what council member Williams suggested. If we can work out something to, uh, sequester the, the applicants in the city hall building and someone can monitor them going in and out of perhaps the chambers where we would have the other, the other hardware. And someone can monitor that way. I think that would work very well.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Any others?
I don't think we're going to have enough applicants that we would have a problem with too many people where we would be outside the governor's limit. Uh, I would hope we'd have at least two, but I doubt we'd have up to five. Uh, that just doesn't seem realistic.
Okay, well, I think in the application material, the posting, uh, provide that there's a, a potential for sequestering candidates at City Hall, depending on the number of applicants that we're talking about or, um, sort of keeping the process a little bit fluid. And that way, depending on what we get, uh, we can adjust, uh, the process accordingly. Any other questions or comments?
Okay Bronson, thank you very much. Uh, thank you council. Um, yeah, a little bit more challenging because of COVID and some of the issues that we've discussed here this evening. And of course, we're going to want to stay compliant with, uh, our Safe Start Washington program as far as how many people we could have at any one time in one of the city buildings. And with that being said, of course, everybody knows that our, our city buildings are closed at this time. So I like the idea of keeping it fluid and we'll do the process, um, going forward. So again, thank you Bronson.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda are city council comments. Uh, council member Balf.
Yeah, thank you mayor. Um, I have nothing this evening. Thanks.
Council member Williams?
Uh, thank you mayor. Uh, just want to remind everybody, get your ballots marked. I got mine done today. We do have a drop box in, uh, the community center. Uh, if you're going to mail them, um, they have to be mailed by, uh, uh, election day, uh, by the close of election day. Uh, the other is, uh, there may be little kids out on Halloween this Saturday. So please be careful if you're driving, the weather's going to be good. It will be a full moon night. But if there are parents that choose to bring the littles out, please everybody be careful. Cause they, the little kids have limited vision when they have their costumes on. And of course, uh, they're all sugared up. So we just have to be careful. Now, that's how it is, you know. Anyway, that's all I have mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Strobin.
No, I have no comment tonight. Thank you mayor.
Okay, council member Servie?
I believe there's also a, um, trunk Halloween fest being held at the church. Candy will be in various vehicles trunks for the children to go buy and grab. So as Randy said, just, um, be safe. It's going to be, um, Saturday. So that always throws, uh, adult parties into the mix. Um, just, you know, keep an eye on your children and keep them out of harm's way.
Mayor, if I could add one more thing on the next door side, just popped up. People are saying, uh, if lights are on, they're handing out treats. If lights are off, they're not handing out treats. That might be a good, you know, thing for everybody to follow.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda are staff reports. We do have two staff reports this evening. Uh, the first one is the finance staff report. Uh, it'll be the, uh, third quarter 2020 update. And Mr. Paul Lewis will be presenting that this evening. Paul.
Good evening. So the city has wrapped up their first round of COVID grants. And we gave out just about $41,000 to 21 businesses and residents. Uh, two applicants were denied for not meeting the criteria. And we have launched a second round of grants that will include assistance for past due rent, mortgage or utilities. The first round was only for past due utilities. So we have added in that rent and mortgage, uh, factor. And the applications are on the city website and are due November 16th. So if you can help to get the word out to businesses and residents, that would be great. And the city did receive an additional $51,000 in award money, bringing our total to just over $153,000. And at this time, we have about $80,000 left to use before the end of November. And then the city will have a new senior accountant here in the very near future and they are slated to start by mid-November. And then we continue to see a significant sales tax dispersment over the previous years. So we received just shy of $66,000 for September. And then that was compared to about $37,000 last year in September. And then we're also still encouraging residents to, uh, use the direct pay option, which means their bill will automatically be deducted from their account. So they don't have to worry about, uh, getting online and making a payment or sending in a check or dropping it off. And since doing this push, we have seen a 6% increase in people choosing to pay that way. I attended the 2020 Washington Finance Officer Association Conference with virtual recently. Uh, the sessions included budgeting and procedures, fighting fraud, auditing, bank reconciliation and bars. And as you know, we have continued to meet for the Budget Advisory Committee. We met twice this month and we have wrapped up those, uh, meetings. So thanks so much to Paul for leading us through that process. And then thanks to Liz and her suggestion last month, we have added the ability now to use a check scanner and make deposits. And so that will save time and money to decrease the number of trips that we make to the bank. So thanks so much for that Liz. And then the city of List Center was recognized by RMSA, the Risk Management Service Agency, as a 2020 safety award winner. And that means that our liability claims have dropped by at least 2%. And then the governor again has, uh, extended his proclamation, meaning utility late fees until the end of the year. But thanks to the COVID grant, we were able to assist several, uh, residents with their past due accounts. Any questions?
Yeah, hi Maria, Doug here. Uh, I do have a question for you. Um, in the, in the, in the private sector, when you get into risk management, uh, they deal in terms of an experience mod, experience modification. Is that term used in the, in the public sector?
It is, yes.
And so do you, do you know what, since we brought ours down by 2%, do we know that what the new, the new factor is on that?
No, they don't tell us what the new factor is, but I can look into that and get back with you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I, uh, I've got to say, I use the auto pay. I don't know if anybody else does, but I sure like the fact that it just goes out of my checking account automatically and I get a notice of it. And that's, it's, it's slick. It's real slick.
Thanks for utilizing that Randy.
Okay, any other questions for Maria this, this evening? I apologize, I thought that Paul was gonna, I mentioned that Paul was gonna do the third quarter update and I neglected to say you were gonna do the, the report. So I apologize for that. Um, and I understand Paul will do the third quarter update?
Yes, I'll take that on. Let me hold it up.
My mistake. Thank you Paul.
So, uh, thank you for that introduction. So this is the third quarter financial update and, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Janice Fowler and Maria for their support. We've, uh, been scrambling to get all the, uh, information pulled together and I appreciate their efforts in doing that. Uh, hers in here though, are mine. So first up on the general fund revenue, this is a similar chart that we've showed you before for the quarterly updates. The major revenue sources are, uh, for the general funder down the left-hand side. The first three columns represent the 2020, uh, revenues, the third quarter amount, year-to-date, the budgeted amount and the percent that we've received at the budget. The next three years are the same, three columns are the same information for the, the prior year, 2019. And then the last two columns compare the 2020 year-to-date amount to the 2019 year-to-date amount and shows the percentage change. So I want to focus on really this third column. We're three quarters of the way through the year. So you're looking at hopefully being at about 75% of your budget. And you can see for the first two, uh, items, two major revenue items, the property taxes and utility taxes were well below that 75% benchmark. Uh, property taxes, that's not necessarily a bad sign that comes in twice a year, April and November. We'll take a, a look at what November brings in. Uh, the current guesses will be at about 95% of the total amount. Uh, but we'll be monitoring that, uh, as we go forward. Utility excise taxes have come in significantly below budget all year. I think, you know, I wasn't quite, uh, positive about how that budget estimate was developed. But we, uh, will definitely, uh, are on track to come in about the same as we did, uh, in 2019, which is this $270,000 number. Uh, the high points, uh, are the retail sales tax and the local criminal justice sales tax, both well over that 75% benchmark. And then the major, uh, issue that we've been struggling with all years, the closure of the card rooms and the gambling tax revenue, budgeted amount of 1.3 million coming in at, uh, $373,000, uh, significantly below, uh, the 1.3, you know, 900,000, 800, some odd thousand below that 1.3, uh, target. Overall for total taxes at 49 and a half percent. Couple of highlights from licenses and permits and charges for goods, all these three, the intergovernmental, all coming in above the 75% benchmark due to the strong development activity as well as to the, uh, intergovernmental, both the state shared revenues as well as the, uh, COVID-19 grants are reflected, uh, in the intergovernmental. Uh, all told, at 58% of the budget for the revenue sources, the transfer from the sewer fund hasn't been made yet. So that's to come in in the fourth quarter. Uh, but, uh, total year-to-date, uh, $2.1 million. That compares to, uh, $2.3 million just, uh, uh, from, uh, 2019. So we're $189,000 below where we were last year through three quarters. But you can see the $620,000 deficit year-over-year for the card rooms has been made up substantially from the increase in the sales tax, almost the doubling of the sales tax, 208,000 increase plus another 6,000 from the criminal justice. So 215 there. And, uh, between these three sources, uh, almost 300,000 in revenue from, uh, licenses and permits, intergovernmental and charges for goods. So again, uh, main story is the gambling tax continues to come in, uh, below the expectations due to the closure of the card rooms. Uh, high, uh, headline is the retail sales tax and the charges due to the development activity are coming in well ahead of budget. Same kind of table presentation for the expenses with the major departments, general fund departments down the left-hand side. Uh, again, looking at 75% as the benchmark, finances ahead of, uh, their budget for the full year. Although we do have a transfer, uh, a journal entry transfer to move some of the salaries that are included here to the utility funds. Those are transfers that hadn't been made in the first three quarters. Uh, and we, I think, uh, over $80,000 of that expense, uh, should be moved. Still will likely come in, uh, ahead of budget due to the significant work done to prepare the city's financials for the audit as well as the assessment and other activity that was, uh, performed in the finance department, including, uh, some additional expenses related to labor negotiations. Legislative, again, they're sort of front-end loaded expenses. Don't anticipate them coming in over budget. Planning, uh, well over budget, uh, 223,000, uh, ahead of last year. Um, but you'll see, uh, if you go back and look at the revenues, uh, 240, $240,000 ahead on the revenue side, roughly equalling the same amount on the expense side. Uh, so both are, are over. Public works coming in under budget primarily due to the restrictions and low, uh, lower activity, uh, with the pandemic. So 78.6% of revenues, or excuse me, expenses year-to-date, uh, compared to 75% of the budget. Uh, and you can see on a year-over-year, or excuse me, on a full rolled up basis, the deficit year-to-date at 955,000, uh, you know, compared to 686,000 last year. So an increase of, of 268,000 on the deficit. This will actually expected to shrink, uh, between now and the end of the year. Remember that this does not include the 300,000 transfer from the sewer utility, uh, through the third quarter. Looking at community development, again, this is a sort of high level, 30,000 foot look at the revenues versus the expenses for community development. These are the permit-related revenues, uh, third quarter 2020 versus third quarter 19. You can see there's that $230,000 increase, just significant increases in the, uh, development activity. Land use fees, so that's the, the front end, uh, of the development permit process, down slightly year-over-year. Uh, and on the expense side, expenses are up. There's been additional staff person included in 2020. In addition, there's some one-time expenses related to staff turnover included there. Uh, but revenues versus expenses through the third quarter of 2020 at 250,000 compared to roughly the same amount last year. So a slight, uh, slight improvement year-over-year. But again, this includes that 55,000 of one-time cost. So really a $60,000, $63,000 improvement year-over-year. And again, just to, this isn't intended to be, uh, matching revenues to expenses. These are permit-related expenses and these expect, or excuse me, permit-related revenues and these expenses include other things other than just permit-related expenses. It's all community development, uh, in that expense. Looking at the utility funds, uh, again, another positive story, uh, for the sewer fund. Uh, revenues of 1.3 million, expenses, uh, excuse me, revenues year-to-date of 920,000, expenses of 5.11. Apologize for the error here. This was one of those last minute changes that we made. The 5.11 is correct. Um, but net revenue of just over 409,000 year-to-date, uh, enough to pay the 300,000 transfer if it was made, uh, earlier on. Uh, and then looking at system development charges, significant $850,000 in system development charges compared to 326,000 in the budget. And, uh, 250,000 from last year, actually, uh, through the third quarter and 483,000 from the full year last year. So again, significant increase in the revenues from the system development charges. Unbalanced, the sewer utility is, uh, on track, 70% on the, uh, revenue side, much below the 75% on the expenditure side. Again, this will change a little bit with those transfers that we're making from, uh, finance to the sewer utility. Uh, those are expenses that had been included in the budget, but hadn't been, uh, included in the expenses through the third quarter. Um, looking at the stormwater utility, 142,000 in revenue, 143, 29,000 in expenses. Again, before we had those additional expenses from, uh, the allocations, so 113,000 in net revenue. The utility, it was just getting started last year in the third quarter. So the year-over-year, uh, comparison really doesn't make, uh, uh, isn't applicable. Uh, so again, positive developments on the utility funds. Just a quick look at the capital funds, another positive story here, similar to the systems development charges. Your impact fee revenues are up more than double, some more than triple over the last, uh, over year-over-year. Your impact fee revenues are up more than double, some more than triple over the last, over year over year. 816,000 in traffic impact fees through the third quarter compared to 222,000 last year. The real estate excise tax, this is from the turnover, sales of properties. Again, up 50,000, up 25% year over year. Total capital revenue up 159% year over year, 1.3 million versus 515. On the expense side, a discussion question at the workshop on the budget was what the city hall expenses had been. 62,800 year to date, plus the additional 30,000 from last year, year to date. So up 32,000. The Breezy Creek, the engineering project that's grant funded, 402,000. So you can see that those 402,000 isn't included in the revenue side, but we have had the expenses. So the grant has been billed. Those revenues haven't come in yet. But net revenue, 861,000 on the capital side. Real positive development primarily attributed to the strong development activity and their impact on the capital funds. Looking at our forecasts, there's the budget for 2020. This is a general fund forecast, 2020 budget, 2020 estimate. Going through, looking at the change over budget, there's the $913,000 drop on the gambling tax from the card rooms. Offsetting that is some positives on the retail sales tax and the criminal justice sales tax as well on the intergovernmental and charges for goods and services. On the expense side, looking at our year end estimates of just under $4 million compared to revenue of just about $3.1 million leaves a deficit of 879,000 for 2020. That's the estimate at this point with the third quarter information that we have. You'll see that that 879 compares to the 913 drop in the gambling tax. So it's almost all, more than all attributed to the lower than expected in revenue from the gambling tax. Okay. Couple of closing observations, general fund revenues, property tax collections should caught it catch up by the end of the year. We'll be watching that closely in November, but hope to get 95% of the budget there. Sales taxes in the fourth quarter should be strong, expecting a smaller increase year over year. Although, as I mentioned earlier, October came in strong as well. Card rooms, again, don't anticipate any more revenue through the rest of the year. And development activity, we expect to slow in the fourth quarter as well. On the expense side, we are going to make that allocation of finance and public works personnel costs appropriately to the utility funds to update those expenses. Fourth quarter expect to be roughly in line with the fourth quarter of last, last year. The exception of development activity expected to slow in the fourth quarter. If you notice, the total general fund expenses were really close to the 2020 budget amount. They may exceed that and I would expect that you will see a budget amendment just to provide that extra cushion to make sure we don't go over the appropriation. So that would likely be presented to you in December. Again, that F budget deficit estimate of 879 is completely offset by the shortfall in the card room revenue. Utility funds continue to perform as expected and the capital revenues come in, are coming in extremely strong compared to last year. So that's the third quarter financial update. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay. Okay, Paul. Thank you again for that update. Great report. So we're hearing no questions from the council members. We can continue to move on with the agenda. We do have one additional staff report this evening. It's the community development staff report. And Mr. Jeff Swanson will be presenting that this evening. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you. I'm going to leave my video off so that my connection stays stable, which works out great for me because I have a great face for radio. So I'll just work through the slides here and I see Sarah's got the map up. So we'll take a few minutes and just go through a couple of project updates. The first is project number six, which is in the town center of La Center. It's the Heritage Center Building B. And we received a submittal for tenant improvements for Teresa's Little School, which is on the first floor of the new building B. And we received that on October 20th. The next update is project number seven, which is on the east side of town. And it's the La Center Middle School. The wet well has been installed and the force main in Lockwood Creek Road for sewer connection. And an emergency critical areas exemption was issued the week of October 5th for a swale in the wetland buffer. Next project update is number nine, and that is the Schwartz B&amp;B. This is a notice of decision and building plans were issued on October 6th and they have started some site work, some groundwork there. Just quick update on number 14, which is Highland Terrace, and that pertains to a later agenda item. And that's the development agreement, which extends the review timeline is coming before you tonight. On number 15, which is the Holly Park subdivision, 16 single family residential plans have been approved and a model home office decision is awaiting the applicant's proof of utility. So as long as they, when they provide the proof of utilities, then we'll approve the model home. On number 17, Riverside Estates, which is in the northwest corner of the city. Paving's been completed and the contractor is placing some utilities and is placing streetlights. Probably the more significant development on this one pertains to action that council took back in June related to an amended development agreement having to do with the phase four park. Night, last night and, and this morning, last night electronically and this morning physically, the city received the critical areas permit and site plan review for the park. And so we'll, Ethan Spoo, our planner, will begin reviewing that and responding to the applicant. As you recall, the amended development agreement can't be executed until the park plans have been approved and permits have been issued. And finally, Belika Town Homes, which is number 22, the applicant is now constructing some street improvements. Moving on, Sarah, if you can go to that first slide. There we go. First, I want to express appreciation for public comments that were offered at the previous city council meeting and want to be responsive to those and providing a brief overview of the community and economic development function at the city of La Center and how economic development works in La Center and my role specifically. Next slide. This functional area is overseen by Public Works Director Matt Jenkins and city engineer Tony Cooper. Sarah Dollar is the city permit technician. Jessica Nash provides customer service and Jim Perry is the building official. The city is supported by two consulting firms, WSP and Exegy. Ethan Spoo from WSP serves as the city's planner and leads city related work where other WSP team members are involved, like the Shoreline Master Program update, for example. The WSP team has biologists on staff that can assist with those kinds of projects. I lead Exegy work on behalf of the city, which includes providing oversight to the planning function performed by WSP. Bronson Potter, the city attorney, provides support on specific projects and issues as those issues arise. The group works as a cohesive team. We scale up where needed to respond to the volume of work the city needs to process. The city also relies periodically on an outside engineering firm and a firm that provides plan review and building inspection services. Next slide. Some examples of specific division of responsibilities is shown on this table. So Matt provides departmental oversight and he assists with development engineering review related to sewer. Tony provides functional area oversight, development engineering, capital project management, and he manages overflow work for like Gray and Osborne that is contracted with the city for engineering services. He supervises the work that they do. Sarah Dollar provides customer service, building and planning coordination. She's staffed to the planning commission and she provides process support for the entitlement process and the many projects that come through on both the building and land use side. Jessica Nash is a new addition to the city and she provides customer service, administrative support and happens to be very talented in website content. And so she's been helping a lot with some public information projects. Jim Perry provides inspection, building inspection and code, building code interpretation, plans examination. He also manages some overflow work where we have outside firms that come in and do some plans examination and some inspection. And he provides customer service responding to questions at the counter related to building. Ethan Spoo, our contract planner from WSP, he provides the planning work. He provides customer service. So he responds to different inquiries and applicants who have questions about their projects and the processes that they go through. He does land use review. He's responsible for the comprehensive plan and code updates. And he also staffs the planning commission. My role is economic development, customer service, strategy, capitalization and project management and planning oversight and support. Bronson Potter provides legal review, works on the municipal code and gives us in community development guidance on the municipal legislative process and manages that process to make sure that we're following appropriate procedures that were required to. Next slide. The community and economic development functional area has three primary strategies and objectives. The first is to improve the efficiency of day to day operations. We do process review and improvement on a regular basis. My business partner has worked with some of the city staff on a project tracking mechanism, for example, that came out of the McKay Spazito report from last year. And as part of this improving efficiency of day to day operations, we're continuing to work on implementation of the recommendations that McKay and Spazito made. The second is long-term development of the community. This is primarily implementation of the adopted comprehensive plan, funding strategies for capital facilities plans, including working with our legislators at the state and federal level and pursuing grant funding for various projects. East Fourth, Breezy Creek, an example of what we do in that area. We review the comprehensive plan because it's something that our department is working with every day. We find areas where zoning code, for example, might not work very well with our economic development objectives. And so those adjustments come through work with the planning commission and the city council. And so these, that involves code revisions and, and alignment with the comprehensive plan. On economic development, we drive the development readiness of land. And this primarily involves in a city that has lots of undeveloped land, infrastructure funding and construction. So big public works projects to get properties to a pad ready state of development readiness. The other thing that we do is we strive to foster an environment that attracts private investment. So driving simple and efficient entitlement processes, having responsive service and communication and market feedbacks. When our plans are out of alignment with where the market is, bringing that feedback back to policymakers. Next slide. So to demonstrate in concept how economic development works, I want to take, for example, the La Center Junction. And you can see on the left portion of the screen, the adopted junction plan zoning code, which is a form based code. And the difference between a form based and a Euclidean style of code is that a Euclidean code would follow the property boundaries and those are outlined in red there. So you would have a single type of use within one of those red outlined areas. Form based, you can see on a single parcel, there are multiple types of uses. As you look down on the southern portion, you'll see yellow buildings, purple buildings and orange buildings all on one parcel. And that is characteristic of a form based code. If you look at the aerial overview, you can see that what is there right now is predominantly undeveloped or underdeveloped, underutilized raw property. Next slide, please. So over time, private land was brought under the city's jurisdiction through urban growth boundary expansions and annexation. Changes from the former rural zoning designations to urban designations was made at the time of these land use actions and was later adjusted through that subarea planning and comprehensive plan changes, that junction plan zoning code. The challenge following these actions and persisting today to this minute relates to the development costs to render these properties pad ready, a term which means that the civil improvements necessary for final site development are in place. So this includes infrastructure like offsite utility connections and transportation system improvements. In this area, there's been much progress in the urbanization of infrastructure and capacity. There's a new freeway interchange up there that was constructed by the tribe. Paradise Park Road has been realigned and a sanitary sewer force main has been constructed in La Center Road connecting the junction to the wastewater treatment plant. There are gaps, however, and these gaps affect the market viability of site development. These gaps include lift stations and sewer lateral connections to the force main, construction of local streets and costs such as impact fees, system development charges and the charges related to the sewer latecomer agreement. These costs are borne by the private property owners and developers and occur early in site development long before a site can host an occupant generating a return for the developer. There's a disconnect there in the cash flow. Additional complexity relates to private sector property market transactions, their timing and subsequent construction activity. For a transaction to occur, buyer and seller must agree on approximate value and willingness to transact. And that is not always a predictable proposition. Before development, a proposal must be vetted through the jurisdiction's entitlement process, requiring the applicant to commit to planning, engineering, jurisdictional review and other costs to obtain development approval. And finally, developers typically time construction activities towards favorable market conditions for labor materials, particularly given the going selling price or lease rate per square foot. Next slide. So what can the city do? The city can influence the development environment. That's the main thing that we can do. This is done through reducing where possible, infrastructure burdens through pursuing state and federal grants and other funding appropriations. This can help pay for road improvements and sewer lines, for example. The city can work consistently to improve its responsiveness and customer service, responding with timely and helpful context and information to inquiries from property owners and prospective developers. to inquiries from property owners and prospective developers. The city can periodically review zoning designations to assure consistency with market opportunity. The city can make its entitlement process as straightforward, brief, and certain as possible. A lot of that is accomplished through providing good customer service, helping projects and applicants get to yes by offering information and expertise. Finally, the city can work with its regional economic development partners. And these are, you know, not limited to CREDC, Identity Clark County, Port Ridgefield, Washington Department of Commerce, Metro Regional Government, Greater Portland Inc., and so forth. There are many different agencies involved in economic development in our region, and we all coordinate and work as a team to try to land new businesses and to expand existing businesses and retain our current businesses. The city's been making consistent efforts and improvements in each of these areas and expects to continue to do so. It typically takes many years for property to convert from undeveloped rural land to urbanized occupied property for all of the aforementioned reasons. And next slide. So for any member of the community or any other interested party, I want to make sure that you know that I'm available to meet virtually or otherwise to answer any questions you might have. And I welcome the interest in La Center's community and economic development. Any questions I can answer at this time?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Well done. I think that was a great outline of all the activities and services that you and the community development team are contributing to the city at this time. So are there any questions from the council for Mr. Swanson this evening?
I do have one more item. But if there are questions specific to this slide deck I just went through or the project list, I'm happy to take those at this time, and then we'll tackle one more item.
Okay, I think we go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. So Sarah, if you can roll the screen there. All right, this should look familiar. This is the Clark County Transportation Alliance. This is the 2021 policy statement. And a very similar document was endorsed by the city last year. And I just want to show you, if we roll down to the next page, Sarah. Project M, which appears on the map on the previous page, is the East Fourth Street widening Breezy Creek Culvert replacement project. And for this project, we've already received a million and a half dollar grant from the Department of Commerce to do the design and engineering. And there's an open house underway right now to review and comment on the 30% design for the project. And as Mayor mentioned in his report, we've also recently, it's been announced that we received a million-dollar grant for construction through the Rural Surface Transportation Program Grants, block grants. Those are federal funds that come through the Regional Transportation Council. And so the remaining balance that we're trying to raise to construct this project is ten and a half million. And so we've let our legislators know as recently as last week, first that we had this open house, thanking them for their support in 2019 for the million and a half dollar grant that we received, and letting them know what the remaining balance is to construct and asking for their help to raise that. So the question for council this evening is, are you comfortable endorsing this CCTA statement again this year? And Sarah, if you can roll back up to the first page of this document, you'll see an area for endorsing organizations. And this is where the city's logo would appear along with many, many other regional partners, both public and private.
I think we should support it again.
I agree as well.
Yeah, we need to support this.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, counsel, thank you for that. Yeah, again, well done, Jeff.
Very well. I will let the CCTA folks know that we're comfortable endorsing the statement again this year. And they'll produce a final statement with our logo on it, I believe, towards the end of November. And I think the next, the next time I give a community development staff report, we'll also be talking about the city legislative agenda for 2021, which includes our endorsement of this statement, but a few other issues as well. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. So on the agenda this evening, we do have a resolution and public hearing. It's for the Highland Terrace Development Agreement. It'll be Resolution 2020-455. And again, Mr. Swanson will be presenting this evening. I do see where the applicant, Mr. Chris Sunstrom, is with us this evening. So welcome to the meeting, Mr. Sunstrom. And we'll get through this present next.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, happy to present to you this evening. Been asked to present the staff report for this agenda item. And so I think what we'll do is I'll present the staff report, take any questions. And Ethan Spoo, our planner, is on, and Bronson Potter is on as well to respond to any legal questions. Then I believe at that time, Mayor can open the public hearing. We can hear from the applicant and anyone else who would like to comment on this. And then close the public hearing, turn it back to council for further questions and discussion and potential action. So by way of background, on December 18th, 2006, the city's hearings examiner issued preliminary subdivision approval for the Highland Terrace Residential Development to be located along Northwest Pacific Highway, directly across from what is now Riverside Estates. Applicants are required to submit a final subdivision prior to preliminary subdivision expiration under state law and the city's code. Preliminary subdivisions approved prior to December 2007 are valid for 10 years or until December 18th, 2016, in the case of Highland Terrace. The applicant for Highland Terrace, Light Rose LLC, did not file a final subdivision before the initial validity period for the preliminary subdivision, but applied to the city for and received a one-year extension until December 18th of 2017. Prior to that expiration, they requested a second extension for an additional three years under an approved development agreement. The preliminary subdivision approval is now set to expire December 18th of this year without another extension. The applicant requests approval of Amendment Number One to the Highland Terrace Development Agreement that would make the following changes to the original development agreement. One, it would provide a third extension for one year until December 18th, 2021, of the preliminary subdivision for Highland Terrace. And two, development agreements commonly set forth the applicable development regulations that will apply. In this case, in addition to extending the preliminary subdivision validity period, the development agreement also requires that the applicant comply with some newer codes that would apply to a newly proposed subdivision, including outdoor lighting, tree protection, and parks and open spaces. Staff finds that the city's development code as applied to this development is largely the same as it was in 2006, aside from the above-mentioned code chapters, and that requiring the developer to submit a new subdivision would not result in a largely different development than already approved. Staff notes that the proposed Northwest 14th Avenue entrance to the site is spaced less than the 600 feet required from another intersection for an arterial roadway, but aligns with Northwest Larson Road as required by a condition of approval from the preliminary subdivision approval. There's no alternative intersection alignment that meets the city's spacing requirement due to the close proximity of Northwest Larson Road and Northwest 15th Avenue. Staff required the applicant submit a traffic analysis certifying the proposed Northwest 14th Avenue intersection will operate safely under peak traffic conditions. The traffic analysis shows that there won't be any queuing issues and that when all future traffic growth is considered, both intersections with Northwest Pacific Highway, being Northwest 15th Avenue and Northwest 14th Avenue, will operate safely. Other aspects of the development agreement not altered by Amendment One remain in full force and effect. There's no impact to the city's budget from extending the preliminary subdivision approval. And the recommended motion is that council approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement as presented. And attached, you also have Resolution 20-455 and the Highland Terrace Subdivision Amendment to Development Agreement. And I'm happy to take any questions, although I may defer some to Mr. Spoo and Mr. Potter. Mayor, I think you did. There you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was unmuted. Okay, not hearing any questions? Any discussion, council members, before I open up the public hearing? Okay, not hearing any questions or comments at 7:57. I will open the public hearing for any comments by the public or anyone in attendance this evening. If you could just, if the clerk could please unmute everyone, and we'll try to manage this the best we can. If more than one person begins to speak out of time, we'll just ask to, I'll call on one at a time the best I can. Let's open for public comment. Please give us your name and address before your public comment. I appreciate it. Okay, has everybody been unmuted, clerk?
I've pressed unmute all. Some are still muted. So I think it's on their own systems that they would have to just unmute themselves, but everybody's open to talk.
Okay, very good. Okay, not hearing any, anybody trying to speak here. I'll just give it one more minute. Hey, I don't hear anybody trying to say anything. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back over to council for any further discussion or questions for city staff on this resolution that's being proposed this evening.
Mayor, I think this is fine because it's just an extension. And I'm glad the extension picked up the three new codes regarding, I believe, those parks and lighting and trees. So I'm glad to see that got incorporated as part of this extension agreement. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. I can see where the developed park is smaller than it would normally be. And there's some reference, though, for some compensation with some, let's say undeveloped open land. But I'd like to know, what's the acreage of the area that will be devoted to park or open land?
I'm going to defer to Ethan on that question.
Hi, can you hear me? Very good. Yes, Councilmember Boff. So the square footage of that proposed park tract is about 14,000 square feet. You know, so not quite half an acre, maybe about a third of an acre. It's only a couple hundred square feet short of what would be required for the 95 units that are proposed. And so, as you might know from your work on the planning commission, parks are required to contain both active and passive areas. And so, you know, the code does permit passive areas such as critical area and open space to be used as part of a park. So they're just using a couple hundred square feet of the adjacent critical area associated with the stream on the site to fulfill their park area requirements. And there is a trail, by the way, that would be constructed within that stream critical area. So there would still be some recreational function there.
Great. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions or inquiries to the staff, council, or discussion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement as was presented.
Second.
Can you make reference to Resolution 2020-455?
That's correct, Mayor. I read it right here. As Resolution 20-455 and the Highland Terrace subdivision amendment to the Development Agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2020-455, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement related to Highland Terrace subdivision. This is an ordinance, so if I could get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Boff?
All right.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Motion carries to approve the ordinance, 2020-455 unanimously. Thank you, council, and thank you, staff, for the presentation this evening. So next on the agenda, the city council does have an executive session scheduled for tonight. We will be going into executive session. Executive session is convened for no more than 15 minutes, and it's regarding pending claims and litigation. So I'm going to ask the city council to close out of this meeting. You do have an invite for another go-to meeting on your email. We will open that, go into executive session. It won't last for more than 15 minutes. At the end of, we will come back into regular session, and there will be no action taken tonight as a result of the executive session. So we'll give it a try and we'll close out of this and then go back and open up for the executive session. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so it's now 8:17. The city council has just finished our executive session. Again, no action will be taken this evening. So we do have one item remaining on the agenda, and that's to adjourn. So if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn this evening's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Everybody have a great evening.
Thank you.